Good evening and welcome to the Board of Select meeting. It is 7:00 PM and we will open the meeting. And sorry for the confusion with Monday evening not being able to meet. Unfortunately, there's been some software issues for about 125 municipalities. So we're not alone. That's always a good feeling, not to be alone. But it really fouled up our obligation to have 48 consecutive hours for posting. So unfortunately, it's a very busy time of the year. So this is unfortunate and we'll be looking into why this happened because we can't be having this happen to us too much. It also made the Finance Committee meeting be posted last night. And as they say, we have a lot of business to attend to this time of the year heading up into springtime meetings. So hopefully, we can get some answers about this. But anyway, keeping with the agenda, we have some warrants, Tina.
Yes, so we have two warrants for this evening. The first is for $2,094.0 and the second warrant is for $1,411,137.14.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the debt schedule. And the Board has asked our Town Treasurer, Mary, and I'm sure she got some help from the Town Accountant as well, to put together a debt schedule in an effort to talk about and to start to look at what some of the projections might be in the future. One thing that I can tell you by looking at it is, and it's been said many times at town meeting, and that is the pot is only so big. And we have so many things that are important to be done in our community. So putting together this debt schedule helps us so that when we do have our Vision Meeting later on in March, we'll have a better concept of all the possibilities and things that we need to think about as a community, all of which cost money. So I'll turn it over to John, who's worked very hard on this with Mary. And John is our liaison to the Finance Committee. And so he has constant contact and communication with them. And we need as much communication as possible. And I appreciate Ken, the Chair of the Finance Committee, coming tonight and going over this debt schedule with us and some of our possible expenses moving forward. And I think that Vision Committee meeting that Stacy was kind enough to initiate is very important because then when we go into that, we can kind of look at everything as a community and see what possibilities are. So with that, John, if you would.
Sure, thank you, Mark. So this evening, we're going to provide a tool to some stakeholders here in the room. In addition, as to Shada, we have representatives from the School Committee. Over the last several months, there's been, actually the last couple of years, I guess, if you go back to the original SOI, there's been some dialogue within the town about future capital projects, the costs associated with them, and the impact it will have on taxpayers. Last fall, this Board recommended several articles for town meeting. They did not prevail, given the fact that there were some public remarks made by members of the Finance Committee that, given the looming high school project, the burden of additional studies that would yield more capital projects could present financial obstacles and challenges. So following all that, we took a step back and after the holidays began, as Mark said, working with our Town Treasurer to put some numbers behind a model that everybody could clearly understand. So what you're going to get, I'll pass out these copies right now to those in attendance. If you want.
Yeah, if there's an extra blue on it. Blue is actually easier to read.
It is. So the model that we're working with is a one-page document. It seeks to capture some very similar information in three separate boxes. For the viewers at home, the information will be made available publicly. But there are, first, a box showing the existing exempt debt schedule. Starting around 1999, going through 2029, we looked at what that tax burden was on an annual basis to the average single-family home of $470,600. And what it shows is over a period of time, in this case, 29 years, the average single homeowner paid approximately $11,800. The burden was, you know, to tackle the various public projects that have been completed for the most part, the schools, police, fire station, and so forth. So that's your base in looking at where things stood for the average taxpayer over the last several years. The second two boxes sort of mirror each other. The first presents the known DPW projects or the large projects that the town understands it's facing today. Our Board has taken some votes to help guide us where these priorities might be. And the schedule begins to give us some sense of not just the borrowing impact, but how the borrowing can be staged over a period of years. The last box is the school building. We took the liberty, I'm looking at you, Stacy, Joan Keith, we took the liberty of giving you some different scenarios for the schools. It's important to note that under these various scenarios, it doesn't reflect any SBAB match. This would be, if you're looking at it, this is just town dollars out the door. The match is just a nice thing. And furthermore, we don't have the benefit of knowing today, and I know you don't either, what would be that investment? So forgive us if we took some liberties with numbers that look strange to you, but we tried to bring them into a scope that reflects different models. The first is a $60 million cost to the community for a high school. The second is a $100 million cost for a high school to the community. And the last one is a $100 million cost to the community, but it's put over for 25 versus 20 years. Mary's done a great job trying to corral these elements into a single view. I think the first thing that you'll observe when you look at this is how expensive things are. And now I sound like a member of the Finance Committee. It's a burden. Comparing what people have been used to on the first column or the first box to any of these models standalone is something that is eye-opening. And tonight, I think, you know, as we begin the season or really get underway in the season of budgeting and preparation for annual town meeting, we thought it would be appropriate to release this information to you all so that you can use it. Feel free to reach out to Ms. Bousquet and ask her to adjust these, you know, numbers or play with them in a way that makes sense for your various committees to start establishing its strategies. We strongly encourage any such ideas or plans that may emanate from those discussions to be shared. Mr. Aronian is spot on. We're here to preach the idea that we're all in this together. We embrace the idea that not everybody has their own personal stake in the ground. This is a community investment. If it was up to me, I would do it all, but it's not, and I can't write a check that big. But I do think there's a path forward, if you spend enough time looking at these numbers, to imagine compromise, to imagine some amount of prioritization, and most of all, scheduling. These numbers present not just opportunity to do that kind of thinking, but it also is going to show you in the realization, once again, that it's quite expensive. And so this evening, Mr. Aronian, if it's okay with you, I'd just like to let us settle in. I'm sure there might be some open questions, but maybe the point for debate or the point for further policy development comes later when the Tribe Board meeting that Ms. Raffey is trying to pull off gets underway.
Yeah. Well, and I think that was the idea was to, and again, we can't thank Mary Bousquet enough. She's been so busy with so many important things in town, whether it be the rate setting or what have you. And I know that she put in some extra time to get this debt schedule down for us so that we could have it before the Vision Meeting that Stacy's organizing. And this just kind of really, I think, will help all the committees have a perspective on just how expensive it is to do things. And like John said, we have so many important priorities in our town that need to be addressed. And I always go back to, I think, the first meeting I had with Ken Zaja, who said, you know, "The pot is only so big, Mark." And I always get reminded of that because, you know, we're not a Weston or a Wellesley, we're a Holliston, and there's a difference. And I know I've mentioned a few times that our commercial revenue in this town compared to other towns is really out of scale. We have gone up though a couple of points in the recent couple of years. We're up to 14% commercial revenue in our town. And that's a good thing. We're heading, we're trending in the right direction. But, so this kind of puts it out there as to a lot of the things that we've been talking about. And we have other things too with the library that is something of importance as well. And I know that we have a placeholder on the warrant for the library trustees who are having the study done that was approved at the town meeting. And that study should be ready in early April. And in addition to that, they're trying to get costs together as to what it would cost to reconfigure the building where TD Bank is. And we have the cost of what it would be to buy that building, but they're going to try to get a little bit of a break from TD Bank if they can. But there's costs to remodel it. And so they're going to try to get us as much information as they can for town meeting for their placeholder to ask the residents to help improve that situation. So that's not on here, but that is another thing. And so that's kind of my point is that every year, we have a lot of things that we have to consider. And you probably know, one of my pet projects is the water replacement of the pipes that was supposed to be done 40 years ago. And we look back into some of those records and there was commitments made that money would be put aside for, and it never was. And so then we get faced with this problem, which isn't fair to the people that are paying taxes today. However, we have leaks all the time, water leaks, and it's very expensive to fix these leaks. And not too long ago, I think it was a week or a week and a half ago, we had two simultaneous leaks. And the DPW Director told me point-blank one day, "This is not sustainable." You know, the leaks are going to become more prevalent, and the cost is expensive. And not only that, but it takes people away from their normal schedule. And they have to now, we have to have some Water Department and DPW officials bring equipment, heavy equipment, to work on this and get it fixed immediately, and then repave the road. So consequently, what happens is we're having to pay time and a half. And the next day, of course, we've got tired employees that had to work late, and their schedules get behind, and then we get the calls from the Board of Select. You know, I was promised this was going to get done, and it didn't get done. Well, when you've got interruptions like this constantly, it doesn't help anybody's schedule. So to me, that's a priority, that we need to accelerate that. We have funding for one mile a year, which includes road construction of that mile as well as sidewalk construction. And as Ken has pointed out, sometimes we can do more than a mile, depending upon the situation of that road. But this has been addressed to try to bring it up to a three mile a year because we have 55 more miles to go. We've only done five since we started. And if you do the math, we were supposed to change these pipes 40 years ago. Well, if we do one mile a year, that's going to take 50 years. That's just not, that's just not realistic. So we have to, we have to do something. And this is important for the whole community, no matter who you are. And it's expensive, and we're already authorized, I think it's eight million. Ken, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it was eight million for the water treatment plant.
Eight point three seven five, yes.
So, you know, we're already spending a lot of money, but that is to clean up the water. Some of the water people are drinking is just simply unacceptable. And so, you know, as a community, we're paying for that. But we need to address and have an accelerated water pipe replacement to go along with that. Another thing that's very important that Ken's brought up is that in 10 years, we're going to need another water well or so. And in order to be able to accomplish that, we have to have a study done ahead of time. So that's just one area of concern for our town, the water. And we, you may not hear the complaints that we do, but when I go to the post office, I put my hood on.
My glasses.
You know, people are upset. You know, some people in town really don't have the, some of them don't have enough water pressure. When you see the corrosion in these pipes, and it, you know, is less area now for the water to go through, that affects the pressure somewhat. And so that is something that, you know, we're working on, that we want to address so that we don't have an emergency of having leaks that are now 20 feet long, where the whole pipe has collapsed. And now we've got a real serious problem of flooding and everything else for that neighborhood. So, you know, this is just one of the things that we need to pay attention to as a community. So I really think that this will help you go through it, ask questions. Mary is happy to answer any questions. If you have some questions already tonight, please ask them.
Can you sort of go through the process, and if Mary could join you, to sort of talk through what do these numbers actually mean?
Sure.
And what about if, you know, where do these numbers come from? Does this mean we took out a debt exclusion? Does this mean, like, can you?
Sure, Mary, come up to the mic.
I'd like to understand the overriding assumptions attached to each project. So partly numbers, but some of it's strategic, some of it's, you know, timing-related, et cetera. So, and this may sound silly, but, you know, there's five or six major projects here, and I totally get why these are priorities, but what else was looked at? What else was considered, and how were these things identified as the critical projects?
Short answer to the question is the timing of the timeline you're looking at, Ann Louise, is just straight-up guess. It's presuming everything happens now. It doesn't mean it has to. The reason you're looking at these projects versus any others is because of the scope and size of them. It was identified as major facility projects only. We didn't look at the library, for example, because given the scope of what they're talking about, those costs could quite likely fall under our debt level or within existing resources. We didn't look at any other large capital projects that may be, for example, a large roof replacement. We didn't examine those at this time. So we didn't foresee those to be debt exclusions. So it was trying, we're trying to keep the model clean and crisp in a way that is easily understood, but you should see this as a fungible thing. So the projects and the timing of the projects can move, and the borrowing numbers, which Mary can speak to, are straight out of our advisor's, you know, calculator. They're the ones who looked at the type of project that might be examined. For example, the water main project, we're not going to borrow $55 million at once. Nobody does that. You borrow short-term for the projects that you need, and you consistently then go back to the market for those type of anticipatory notes. But Mary, you can shed some light on that if you could.
And also, before you start, Mary, we have the new facilities manager position, and he will be doing an assessment of all municipal buildings and creating spreadsheets on, you know, what are the priorities for safety? What do we need? And that would be capital expenses.
Potentially.
And, you know, that could be handled in different ways as well, but, but again, that's not part of this.
So the first large project we looked at were the water main projects for $55 million. And we took the debt over, we did five phases. So the first year we did, first year we did a ban for $3 million, the second year we did a ban for $3 million. The third year, we did a ban for $3 million. We paid down $150,000. Then in the fourth year, we issued a bond for $11,850. Yeah, $11,850,000. And then we did the same thing for Phase Two. We started the ban process over until we get to the last year. So it's over, it's over a number of years, but we keep going that cycle until we finish the project. If we borrow the money all upfront, we're going to get hit with arbitrage, and we'll be paying IRS money, which we don't want to do. And it also gives us the ability to look at that first three years. Did we spend the whole $9 million in that three-year period? IRS regulates how much time we have to spend the money we borrow, so we have to be very careful with that. So it was just a starting place of how we get this project done. So there, we have debt schedules I can share with anyone if you want, to see how we go over the five phases. We did the same thing with the sidewalks. That was over six, the six phases.
Real quick, the model shows a 40-year payback period for a project that can very well end after, you know, 20 or so.
Right.
The cost of paying it goes on after that.
Right. So each bond is, you have three years of bans, then you have 20-year payment of bonds for each phase. So it makes it look like you're paying it over a longer period of time. The sidewalk project, we did the same thing, except we did a ban for, first year for $1 million. The second year would be $2 million, so we pay back $1 million. We have another million to work with. Third year, we do $3 million ban. We have to pay back $77,000 of that. So in the fourth year, we do a bond for $3,923,000, and that's payable over 12 years. Because sidewalks, you can only borrow for a total of 15 years. So, and that's how we do that same thing we did with the water mains, we do with the sidewalks. We do it in phases.
Well, two things, two things I'd like to see. One is, in addition to the cost of the average single-family home, I'd like to see that as a column next to that, not in all three charts, but just in one column, shows what the average single-family tax bill is and the percentage change. So telling me it's $1,500, right? If that's on a $20,000 tax bill, that's a lot less than if it's on a $6,000 tax bill. So I'd like to see that column of what the estimated average single tax, single-family tax bill will be and the percentage that this will add to it.
So in other words, Ken, you're looking at year 2042?
In each of the tables, you have the cost to average single-family home, right? But I need to know what that cost is relative to. What are they paying right now?
So in other words, you would grow the value of the home by some percentage? Do you want to see some inflation?
No, no, you're complicating it. I'm saying a zero-order thing would be, just tell me what the average value of a single-family home is, and add a column that says percentage of today's average single-family tax.
In today's dollars.
You can do that. Or you can get more complicated and project out as you want to, but...
Well, you had to make some flatline assumptions just to get the cost to average single-family home in year 2056. So you use the same assumptions on a percent or index basis.
Because I just want to see what the percentage rate's adding to the bill is, right? I think that's very, that'll tell you a lot about what the burden would be of the taxpayer.
Great.
The other thing I was going to say was, for some of these projects, how were the costs, like, for example, the sidewalks?
Scope and scale.
Right? What's the scope and scale of that?
That is a guess.
Is that to sidewalk the entire town? Is that to sidewalk going downtown?
That's just, right now, it's a swag, Ken, until, and if we get a full-blown study to determine the true cost.
But so that was my question related to assumptions that may be more qualitative or strategic, like, you must have had some assumption that says, "We're going to repave 20% of the sidewalks in town," some swag estimate on what you're thinking, or everything within a mile of downtown to accommodate schools or something. I don't know, like...
We did not. Don't overthink that.
Yeah, no, I don't.
We have not received a full inventory of the type of work that would be involved. It was essentially looking at about half of the total scope of the side, of the streets that would be impacted by this process. That's all it was.
There's no, there's no document to which you can go to pull the specific information you're looking for. I think in a much more general way, what you can do, though, is look to pull from DPW, from Sean Reese's office, when they do a water main replacement, and then they come in. They're doing a whole bunch of other things, though, so it's very hard to break it out to sidewalks only. But you could look to say, "Okay, so in Mudville, they just did the water mains last summer. This upcoming summer, they're going to do all the surface road work improvements, so what's the cost of that?" And then you could kind of use that to get to your number, but that, I don't think that was the process that was followed here. This is just a stake in the ground.
So it's the assumption, then, that the sidewalks will be done in tandem with sewer work because you're ripping stuff up and you have to do the sidewalks? So there's certainly...
I don't think...
Yes and no. We're proposing, that you will hopefully hear from us at town meeting, about a study that will examine the strategy behind where the water pipe replacement plans will be over a period of time. And then in tandem with, to your point, the water replacement plan will mirror or include the sidewalks where they're necessary.
Which it does right now.
I can't hear you.
Which it does right now.
Right. It does the one mile right now, yes.
It does, but there's no strategy behind that, Ken. The plan doesn't, he does not have a plan that says in year 10, you're going to be doing the queens in this street and this sidewalk. Doesn't do that. Doesn't go out that far.
We can talk about this offline, but I know that it's not random decisions on which pipes get replaced. It is, we're all to the sidewalks. In other words, they decide which mains are getting replaced based on the condition study that they had done earlier.
Yep.
And then those are just prioritized by the pipe condition. And then when they do that, if their sidewalk, as Tina pointed out, if there's sidewalk that wants to be done...
Sidewalks are done at the same time.
That's all done at the same time, so...
But we'll, I'd definitely love to talk to you offline because the plan does not include the strategies of what those pipes and what that, what those neighborhood replacement plans will look like in 10 years. They just don't do that.
I think the thing that would be helpful to me when you do go back and look at this is really teasing out the cost of, like, if you're doing the water main and then the road repair work that goes along with that, and you'll use that broadly, does that cost encompass just the roads, or is it the roads and the sidewalks? And is there any double counting potentially between that work associated with the roads because you're digging up for sewers? And then we're now, we now have a set aside on sidewalks? Because what I'm understanding is that it makes sense that there'd be a more coordinated process and that that would probably determine where, you know, the miles of sidewalk you're going to fix.
And there's some areas where it's a newer neighborhood, and so they have newer pipes and newer sidewalks, so they would not be included. So there's a little bit of, you know, work to do there.
The other question I had about this, given that you have water mains and sidewalks as separate things, is the sidewalk plan contingent on the water main plan?
So I was just going to jump in and say that I think the key here is to keep this simple, and so I think that's what's been done. But no, this is not simply you're replacing water mains and then you're going to replace sidewalks. There are other factors that go into it.
No, no, my question was different. What I'm saying is, you're saying we should borrow money to accelerate the water main replacement. And then you have another column that says this is the sidewalks. If you're accelerating the water main replacement, then you're going to be replacing sidewalks faster too. So I'm saying, does the 24 million for the sidewalk, the sidewalk plan, is that dependent on the water main plan? Meaning that they're done in tandem, so that if you fund one, you fund both? Or if you don't fund the water mains, then the sidewalk plan changes because now you're going to slow pace?
So I don't think that that's the purpose of tonight's conversation, but I'll just jump in and say no.
Okay. It's fine.
We have other documents and other processes.
Yeah, Ken, we don't know. The reason why we're looking to do the study is to determine what those facts are. We don't understand if they can be decoupled and treated independently, or if they need to be to make, you know, make this project financially viable, as Ann Louise is suggesting.
In some neighborhoods...
It has to happen concurrently.
In some neighborhoods, they may be done separately.
I was just, I was just...
If the water pipes aren't that old and then...
They were assumed that they were both, they were, the common assumption is for both, that's all.
Right now, it's, as Tina said, we're not seeing that.
That's fine.
To keep it simple, but it doesn't mean it can't get that way. And we'll hopefully learn that through the study.
To circle back, the 2020 average tax bill for Holliston is $8,870.
Right. Which is what I knew. And that's why I said when you're looking at numbers that are like $1,500, that's 20%. Right? So that's, that I think is more relevant than anything.
Sure, sure.
Saying to people when you vote...
Well...
Because I think politically, I don't think people would ever vote to support that kind of debt. That's just my, my personal opinion.
That is certainly one way to look at it. The other way, which this page offers, is burden. And as Mary shows in the highlighted area during the period, using the existing debt schedule, I believe it was 2002, that average taxpayer was shouldering a burden then of $772 at the highest peak. So you compare that burden to, in today's dollars, with what would be the burden in these other projects. All that is is a comparison tool. You know, it's not controls for inflation or anything like that, but that's all it is. To Ken's point, there's another way to look at it. Happy to do that. Any way you cut it, it's still expensive.
Well, right, do these numbers also account for the debt that's retiring?
No, this would be all new debt.
This is all-
This is all new debt.
All new debt.
Yeah, but you can see that on the, am I right, on the-
So the, so in the existing exempt debt, that's where you see the debt retiring.
Yeah, so you gotta feel for where you're layering.
Yeah.
If you're layering. Um, the DPW building, and I'm truly asking out of pure ignorance on this, do you already have specifications for that, like a blueprint, or is this just a general concept of-
No, one of the articles we're asking for is the study to evaluate the scope, location, and cost of constructing one. The fifteen million dollar value you see here was a similar building, I believe it was Medway, that recently constructed, a similar-scale building for fifteen million, that's where the number came from.
Okay, so it's still swag, okay.
And this one does not include any short-term debt? Only because I have no idea how much they need upfront to even start the project.
And while we're, I'm sorry to cut you off real quick, while we're in small little weed here, I'm sure, I'm sure Ken knows this, that first item under DPW, Ann Louise, the eight million dollar piece?
Yep.
That's, that's a possible drop from this list. We're, we're currently evaluating whether or not that sees a long-term debt override. There's a placeholder on the warrant right now, but there's a good chance, and we're gonna try and play some money and play it out here, that that can fit under the water-retained earnings debt payment now. They've got some projects that are sunsetting in twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two that could afford the value of this eight million dollar treatment plan and thus not make its way into this model.
Is that why-
That's a good possibility, I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's interesting, so thank you for sharing that, is that why it's got a start date of twenty twenty-three?
Right, because we'd be, you have to fund the project and the state reimburses this, the state gives us zero dollars, no interest in term loans.
Okay.
So by the time we have to do the bond, it should be later.
Okay.
And that all depends on when the state issues the bond.
Right, and we actually wouldn't be bonding a full eight-point-three-seven at this point-
Right, because we already did six hundred thousand.
Six hundred thousand of it, yeah.
Correct.
So almost, but, okay.
Are there any programs for municipalities like the MSBA? So there's the Mass School Building Authority, is there a municipal building authority who, where the state partners with towns to help with projects other than school buildings?
I don't, I'm not aware of one, although Mary just mentioned a, a water infrastructure payment plan, we're making use of that. But there is no SBAB for water pipe replacement and local infrastructure improvements and things like that. Unless you can get the legislature to write an ICR mark in there to write a check.
Well, just get right on that.
Happens, just saying.
When we did the renovation to Town Hall, was there any partnering with the state? Like, I just, I just, in Southport today, I just drove by their beautiful new police and fire and blah, 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 it's gorgeous. And I can't imagine that the taxpayer of Southport hated it.
I think we used some CBC money, didn't we, Ken?
Or the Town Hall?
Yeah.
Okay, well, well, depends, we gotta be careful about what we're talking about. There was more extensive renovation done about twenty years ago or something like that. And there was the paint job that was done, last decade or something.
Right.
The paint job had CBC money with it, the renovation did not.
Okay.
So, and the renovation, that was the famous mistake that was made, that you've heard me talk about many times, of, we got thirty-six thousand dollars by designating the building as a historic structure, and we've, probably cost us four hundred, five hundred thousand dollars in, in having to find the descendants of the original farmers who raised the trees that made the wood for the outside, because of that thirty-six thousand dollars, so that's why I'm very much against applying, you know, applying for historic preservation grants-
Right, 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 right.
At least until after the work's done anyways.
There is a state program for library renovations. I'm, I'm not familiar on the details, but that, that, that exists for libraries.
Right, so when we did the, the police station, that was totally town.
Yes.
And when they did the renovation for Town Hall, they chose not to put in a new septic system, which is unfortunate because-
Where is it?
Uh, well, there's two cesspools, one on each side.
Cesspools.
Yes, yes.
And we had an incident, we had an incident last fall, running down the street in a jogger, running into it. So we've since dropped all events upstairs, other than the ones we already had deposits for, we honored those.
Oh.
And we have a, we have a committee, a septic committee, who is looking at-
How do I get on that?
Putting in a new septic system.
Send an email, we'll take you right in.
Pull the papers.
An engineer-type, Paul Sonier is the, is the chair. And the Congregational Church was kind enough to let us do some testing on this side of their property, and we're, we're gonna hopefully be able to work out arrangements to put it there, because we're in a tough spa, spot here, as far as where can you put it?
Five-hundred-year-old graveyard, you could just-
Oh, my gosh, but it's a disaster. And that is not on here either, because we don't have costs yet. But that's something that has to get done real soon.
What a shame those sewers-
But, you know, what a shame it wasn't done twenty years ago when they did the renovations. They were, it was recommended to be done by the health directive, but it was not done. So, it is what it is, and so again, this generation has to pay for it, you know, which is really unfortunate that we get hit with all this extra stuff that we really shouldn't have, but-
But let that be to, a lesson to us.
Yes.
Should not make the same mistakes to screw the-
Yeah.
-forthcoming generations.
Yeah, you know?
You know, we have to make responsible decisions, but I feel like our conversation's a little bit fear-mongering, like, we have so much to do and so much money, and that is real, I get that, but what can we do to move forward to really start thinking about how we're gonna address these things?
Well, and that's gonna come out of your vision meeting.
Right.
But we wanted to give you some preliminary debt schedule information so that we can all make, you know, good choices. And I think between everyone with all of their expertise, it should be a good, good vision meeting, and it'll set the path for the town for years to come. And if it's ten years that it takes to accomplish everything, then that's what it takes. You know, what, what is realistic and what are the residents, what are the taxpayers willing to pay? You know? So, you know, whatever we do is gonna have to be approved at town meeting. So, you know, we, we better try to make a plan that, that's feasible, or it just won't get passed, you know, so.
Can I, if you said this in the five or so minutes, whatever, when I wasn't here, I apologize. The school projects, I understand they're assuming our portion, the town portion, not the state reimbursement portion.
Yeah.
I'm hoping, because we wouldn't get a whole lot.
Right.
But what were the assumptions around a six, like, and I know they're swags, but what's the sixty million, what's the hundred million?
Just a high and a low, I think, just-
Well, there are three, there's two hundred-
Was it a high and low, was it a reno, a rebuild? Like, I was just curious what you were thinking, just into your-
There was, don't, you, you, there wasn't.
Okay.
It was, there were numbers, looking, looking at roughly the amount that the town would be offset in, in the event of a sixty million project, you're looking at a hundred and twenty million dollars if it's a fifty-fifty.
So that might, might be a renovation?
That's all it was. It's nothing more than a benchmark, it could've been fifty million, there wasn't any deep thinking behind it.
Forty-eight, forty-eight percent, yeah, so it's about that.
I think it's important to, to make the point that these do not, this spreadsheet does not reflect decisions.
Oh, no, I understand.
It reflects a set of assumptions.
I try to understand the thought process that went into it, so, and the assumptions, cause you had to make some, you had to do some-
I, I don't wanna throw numbers out there irrationally, but I thought I heard two hundred million out of somebody's head at one point about the high school, that the cost of the high school could've reached that much as a full total cost, and then SBAB kicks in about half theoretically.
You know, it, again, it's a scope and scale thing, right?
Right.
Like, like a, a full-on rebuild that was accommodating potentially even a larger population, or had more, like hell, throw a swimming pool in, whatever, I don't know, it could, but it also depends when you do it, right? Like, if you don't, I know, it isn't like that's a swag, but I'm, I'm just saying, like, you know, you could build the Taj Mahal or not, it sort of depends where you go with something like that. But until we have a feasibility study that helps us understand the specific needs of the district as they relate to that campus, we couldn't, we couldn't even begin to swag this, right?
So the executive director did throw out a number at us, he said they were just finishing a project in Somerville that was like two hundred and forty million. He also shared with us that it was because construction, construction costs are so high right now, too, that was, that was another factor that, you know, that's so volatile as well, so he couldn't vote.
Yeah, the point on that was sort of an interesting one, that the ideal time to build is during a good recession, which is a little counterintuitive, but construction costs and labor costs go down, so it has a significantly positive impact on construction costs.
Not on my tax bill.
So you're suggesting-
That doesn't, that doesn't hit right away, though, right? And-
Well, that's what I'm saying, you have to be lucky, cause you have to start the process years before the recession's here.
Right.
Noru was the last digit that got that lucky, they, they hit their bond in two thousand and eight and got a bargain price for their high school.
Right, so, you know, it sort of depends, your foresight, right? Like, we're looking at, you know, we've been on kind of, I'm gonna say a seven-year bull market now, so eight years, you could probably guess, you could look at business cycles over the last fifty, you could, you know, anticipate, it's not tomorrow, but it's not twenty years away either, right? So who knows? But I, I think the key thing, one of the things that I wanted to make sure was well-understood is that while all of this is like at sixty thousand feet for consideration for the town, and I think that's smart, I think that was really a good way to kind of to say, you gotta put a flagpole in the ground somewhere, you gotta have some information to help start to inform things. But that is sort of where the school building projects are a little bit different than what's on the left, because our first step really is continuing to move forward on that statement of interest. And I think there may be a misunderstanding on the importance of consistency related to that, and it is our understanding, while it's not in quite black and white, but we were told at this table that that consistent year-over-year support from the community really matters, and it sends the right message to the state that the town is serious about the project, and it's not like, well, let's talk about it this year and next year we'll let it go. You know, it, it, it definitely mattered to them to see that we, you know, once we sort of start that dialogue with them, until if and when they're able to approve it, we continue down that path.
And if that is the school committee's direction that they wanna continue, you know, coming forward with, knowing what the cost associated with that type of ask is, you've got a finance committee that looks at that and says, we can't do anything else other than wait for that high school. It's a large number, Ann Louise, and-
And was that the message that, that's, I, that's the first time I've heard that.
No, the, the message, the message from October was that we, was a timing issue, right? We, we, there's no point in, and this is part of a discussion we'll have outside of this meeting, right? But there's no point in talking about, I mean, look at the numbers we're talking about here, right? Just hypothetically, if everything got funded, right, that we're seeing here, you know, you're talking about, you know-
Thirty-five hundred dollars a year.
Yeah, thirty-five, you know, thirty-five hundred dollars a year on an eight thousand dollar average town. I'm just speaking practically and saying there is zero chance in my mind that the town, residents would ever vote to raise their tax bills that much, period.
Right.
Right? So, so my point was about the, you know, I'm not anti-soi, I'm not saying that at all, that's not my job to weigh in on the sois, it's between you and the, you know, school committee and select board. But my, my feeling is that there has to be some vision as to what the priorities are among these projects. And they're, given that we know we can't do it all, my comment about the soi was, why bother studying everything when you know from day one you can't fund it all, and by the time you can, the studies would be outdated?
So you're, your concern is studies across the board?
Yes. My, my, I'm, 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 I'm speaking personally, but I can tell you what my, my personal impression of the feeling of the committee is, right? We haven't had formal votes, so I don't wanna speak for the committee. But I will tell you that just among the members of the committee, I would guess that there would be a concurrence that you don't study something, or study a, a project unless you have a plan to complete it. Spending seventy-five or a hundred thousand dollars, or fifty thousand, or whatever it is, to study something, and then getting the study back and saying, okay, well, now we spent this money and here's what it tells, it's gonna tell us it's gonna cost a lot of money, oh, we can't afford it, so it's, we just wasted money. Because then when you get the time to do it, or the chance to do it, the study's invariably out of date because it's five, six, seven, we heard that in October about the water studies, oh, they're all out of date, we have to do them again. So, that's, you know, again, I'm speaking just personally, but I'm giving you my, my understanding of where I think the committee sits, which is that, that you don't study something unless you're saying, okay, this is where we wanna do it. Now, I'm not talking at all about the soi, just to be clear, I'm talking about the other studies.
Right, no, but seventy-five thousand dollars for a research study is a rounding error on the scope of these projects. And I think unless you have all the data, you can't make these decisions in a vacuum, and you can't make them based on swags. I really appreciate this, not a criticism at all. But to Mark's point earlier, if we're not going to look at all of these in a, in a more detailed way, then we are saying, we're gonna have to develop a, well, if-then sort of analysis. So, okay, so if we decide as a community that we're gonna build a high school and we're gonna ignore the water stuff, okay, what's it gonna cost us when the water starts failing? Like, what's it gonna cost us in emergency dollars? Okay, on the other side of that, oh, we have to focus on the water as a community, we've decided, we cannot put any much of the, on money into the high school. Okay, well, we're telling you now that we have to replace the septic. We're telling you now that the fieldhouse roof is caving in. I mean, I'm making these things up, but you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, there's costs.
So that is, that is a, that is another analysis-
Right.
That it would be irresponsible not to do, but I disagree that you, that you shouldn't study it-
No, no, no.
Because you might not proceed.
Before you take my comments out of context-
Okay.
I'm talking about paying somebody to do a detailed study. All that stuff you're talking about?
Of what?
All the stuff, to, to, in preparation of a project, in preparation of a project, that's what these studies were.
So ergo a feasibility study.
Right, something like that. What I'm talking, what you're talking about, I totally agree with, but we have data, right? We can find out, we can go get quotes on what it would take to do the septic system, we can get, we can get data on what other towns have done in certain areas. It's, we're talking about studies that are more formal studies that say, this is what the project's gonna be, this is the scope, the things you do as step one of the next phase, which is the design phase, the water treatment plant is an example, right? Study, design phase, bond, right? So my point is, and by the way, at seventy-five thousand-
Engineers are experts.
And that 75,000, just one more comment. The 75,000 you're referring to is a drop in the bucket.
A rounding error.
Is a rounding error, is a facilities coordinator for, facilities manager for a year, is a sustainability coordinator for a year. So these things are not just drops in the bucket. That's our job, right, is the finance committee is to tell you, every dollar matters.
Okay, so just a point of clarification, though. So we don't know which studies are on the table. I know you've referenced, Ken, there are multiple different studies that could be pursued here, right? And I respect that, like, there may be other ways to kind of gauge, at least upfront, some of the costs on this. But at the end of the day, to really understand what's involved in the water main or the treatment plant, you're gonna have to go to that next level.
Right.
And you'd have to prioritize, and you're gonna prioritize based on some sense of urgency and need and safety and all of that. The difference with the feasibility study for the high school project, I'm just gonna call it that because we don't know what that is until we do it. The reason that is different is sort of twofold. The first is it's not just a, the word feasibility is misleading. It's not just a feasibility study.
None of this we've mentioned, discussed this.
No, no, I know, but you may understand that. I wanna make sure everyone else understands that, what that project would be. It's a project that goes in, it's a needs assessment. It's, it looks at all kinds of qualitative data around what the district is doing today, both educationally, it looks at population, it looks at what's gonna be happening in that building over the next 50 years if they do something. And in addition to that, they come back to you not just with high-level, it's feasible, it's not, or high-level recommendations. It actually gets down to architectural planning. And that is highly valuable. Not only that, if we choose not to do that, then when we ultimately as a town, because it's a little, you know, it's not an if, it's a when, need to get to that point and we haven't applied to the state to participate in this statement of interest process, they won't kick in any money for it. And that's a key thing. We will end up picking up the cost of that feasibility study entirely on our own. It doesn't mean we can't get the state involved at the next step, but if we don't get them involved at the very first step, we're just being foolish because we're not, we're leaving money on the table and resources because they will bring experts to the table to assist with.
And just to be clear, just to be clear, that's why I kept saying I'm not talking about the SOI. SOI is completely different than what I'm talking about.
Well, I get that, but I think what's happened is that somehow in the context of talking about various upfront feasibility studies for other town projects, that the SOI has kind of fallen into this vortex of misunderstanding and being held hostage because these other things are on the table. Rightfully so, these are important considerations. And I really do genuinely mean this. I think you've gone about this and, you know, it's been an interesting and helpful way to start the dialogue. And I think Stacy's right, there needs to be now, you know, visioning, meaning, strategic planning committee, whatever. But the SOIs should be riding along in parallel with that.
So this is not, truly, this is not the night to have the conversation because it's presenting information purely. I'll look forward to hearing about the difference between the feasibility study for the accelerated repair program and the feasibility study for the new building. I don't, I'm looking through the documents now. I don't see the difference between the two. I understand that there will be one.
I have something I can add to.
Yeah, no, I understand, I don't doubt that there is. I'll be really curious to understand the difference between the scope of the two. That's, yeah, no, truly, just wanna know that information. Don't challenge that there isn't a difference. So what I was hoping to get out of tonight was, with this information as a starting point, in my mind at least, as I've thought about this and looked at this, is we're looking at prioritizing, but we're also looking at affordability. And they're really two separate conversations. And so my question, I've got two, is where do we go next? As a tri-board group here, where do we go next in the discussion? Do we go to affordability? Do we go to prioritizing? And what process would we follow for either? And then where do studies place, where do they serve the greatest value? In terms of prioritizing or in terms of determining affordability or both? There is one piece we have not addressed here, and that's community input. I think when we get to the point of prioritizing, community input is essential. I think it's a critical piece to the feasibility study, is that you have that demonstrated. I might be wrong on that, but in any regard, when we get to the point of prioritizing, we need some format by which we get community input. So those are my thoughts that I put out on the table as to, kinda curious as to what's coming next. I think the tri-board meeting is a must, in my opinion. I look forward to that. And I am looking for feedback as to whether or not the tri-board meeting is gonna focus on affordability, prioritizing, both.
And I think home values, because I think another layer of community input has to be, what is going to increase the value of your home more? If you have good water? Because the water in Holliston is a source of consternation and has been for years. But before I moved here, I didn't think about that.
Yeah, you should be really good.
But for people who live here, that's a big deal. So in addition to affordability, feasibility, another is, another layer to the community input in my mind is what improves your home value more? Or slash your quality of life?
You're talking about economic strength and sort of in the future.
I think that goes with the whole priority setting process. And it's one of the reasons that the discussion with the Collins Group a few years ago began with, what are the criteria that matter to us as a community?
Right, what are the priorities?
And based on those criteria, we looked at projects, big and small, and said, you know what, this one, this one's like a two on that criteria. Ah, but this one's a 10. And, you know, then you come up with some weighted scale that says, these projects, here are all the things that should be influencing those priorities, including community inputs. So I guess my only fear is that unless that vision meeting is coming up soon.
It is, I believe it's beginning of, Stacy?
We are on a timeline with this SOI. It's April, and we can't drop it on Brad on April 12.
We gotta, we gotta get that finalized real soon, you know, within the next week or two for sure. I'll mention it to Jeff if you want.
We're gonna have it at the senior center, like we have in the past.
Wherever you, we'd like to, how about the library?
At Anthony's.
Pinecrest.
Yeah, we did. I think we left Pinecrest after.
Yeah, no, we had it there.
Stacy's house.
Oh, Stacy's house, she is the chair.
John's gonna call him because he doesn't like me face-to-face.
Touche.
That's against the open meeting law. We don't have that capability yet, select board.
Thank you, Mary.
You're welcome.
All right, so we'll nail down very soon. And Mary's got a little homework to do. And if you have any other things that you think of after looking at the information, definitely get to Mary as soon as you can so that we can have it for the vision meeting. And then we'll start to try to formulate a path that makes sense. And then, like you said, we'll have to get community input and with some sort of a survey or something. And we gotta be ready for town meetings, so.
Can I just, with respect to the vision meeting, I know there was an economic development committee in town.
They're meeting right now.
They're meeting right now.
They're upstairs.
Because they got a plan for us. Like, I mean, I think that's so, like, relevant to any strategic discussion about the future of the town. I don't know if there's a report from that committee or input or representative.
Yeah, they do give us a report every so often. We could ask for one for our vision meeting.
That would be really helpful because I feel like that's, like, there aren't too many data points we have to inform that discussion. I think that would be really helpful.
Yeah, absolutely. And can any questions at all from anyone on your committee? Information that you want to be ready for the vision meeting? Please let Mary know or one of us, and we'll make sure.
Ken, a quick question. Is your board, is your committee scheduled just pushed back a week? You didn't try to?
No, no, because we can't do that. I mean, we could do that, but there are logistics where, as you may not know, there were, half the reason we had, the schedule we had was to accommodate people who were gonna be on the direct department heads who were gonna be out of town and things like that. So that's why I have to rework the whole thing. So it's not just, I'm probably gonna work on it tomorrow.
Oh, okay. But right now, the next meeting is Tuesday at 8:00, right?
Yes, Tuesday at 8:00.
After the polls course.
That one will probably stay as scheduled because we're starting late and we're already going late, so we won't go too much later than that.
Okay.
It all depends on what I can fit in.
Understood, just let I check, thanks.
And please share this information with Dr. Jackson, and he might have some thoughts and ideas.
He's going home with his copy, right?
The copy's on the table on May 20.
All right.
This is super helpful.
Okay, so I think that takes care of the debt schedule on the agenda. Next, we have bonds.
Yeah, so I have need to, as a court, read a statement that allows the select board to approve the issuing of new bonds to pay for the remainder of what's owed on the police station. So here goes.
May I, before you begin?
Yeah, please.
Mr. Chairman, I understand that in Mary's preparation for this document, Mary, please speak up. I encourage you to do so. I think you revealed that as a result of some recent bond sales, we've saved a substantial amount of money. And I think folks at home need to hear what that story was and how it came about before Tina gets onto the official business.
We saved over the next nine years $366,277 in interest payments. We were able to take the premiums that we received from our offering plus our debt payment in May and reduce the amount of a bond. The outstanding amount before we borrowed was 3.1 million, and we got it down to 2,400 and something.
415.
415. So we were able to reduce it, save on interest. And we, the notes are at 4% and 5%, but with the premiums, our true interest cost is 1.003%. So we did really well.
That's fantastic, thank you, Mary.
We received nine bids. Unibank was only expecting three to five, so it shows that we're really in a good place financially.
Sorry, Tina, I thought that the meeting should be reiterated.
So that brings us to the business of approving the reissuance of those bonds, which I will now read. I, the clerk of the select board of the town of Holliston, Massachusetts, the town certified that at a meeting of the board held February 26, 2020, of which meeting all members of the board were duly notified and at which a quorum was present, the following votes were unanimously passed, all of which appear upon the official record of the board in my custody. Voted that in order to reduce interest costs, the treasurer is authorized to issue refunding bonds at one time or from time to time pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 21A of the general laws or pursuant to any other enabling authority to refund the town's $6,630,000 general obligation police station bonds dated May 15, 2009, maturing on and after May 15, 2020 inclusive, in the aggregate principal amount of $3,150,000 collectively, the refunded bonds. And that proceeds of any refunding bonds issued pursuant to this vote shall be used to pay the principal, redemption premium, and interest on the refunded bonds and costs of issuance of the refunding bonds.
Ken.
Further voted.
Want any more copies?
That the sale of the $2,415,000 general obligation refunding bonds of the town dated February 28, 2020 to UMB Bank at the price of $2,842,455.98 in accrued interest, if any, is hereby approved and confirmed. The bonds shall be payable on May 15 of the years and in the principal amounts and bear interest at the respective rates as followed. Here goes. 2021, the amount $275,000 at a rate of 5%. 2022, $300,000 at a rate of 5%. 2023, $300,000 at a rate of 5%. 2024, $300,000 at a rate of 5%. 2025, $300,000 at a rate of 5%. 2026, $300,000 at a rate of 5%. 2027, at a rate, an amount of $305,000 at an interest rate of 5%. 2028, at a, for an amount of $170,000 at an interest rate of 4%. 2029, for an amount of $165,000 at an interest rate of 4%. Further voted that in connection with the marketing and sales of the bonds, the preparation and distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated February 12, 2020, and a final official statement dated February 19, 2020, each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer, be and hereby are ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted. Further voted that the bonds shall be subject to redemption at the option of the town upon such terms and conditions as are set forth in the official statement. Further voted that the town treasurer and the select board be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver a continuing disclosure undertaking in compliance with SEC Rule 15C-12 in such form as may be approved by bond council to the town, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference in the bonds for the benefit of the holders of the bonds from time to time. Further voted that we authorize and direct the town treasurer to establish post issuance federal tax compliance procedures and continuing disclosure procedures in such forms as the town treasurer and bond council deem sufficient or if such procedures are currently in place to review and update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax exempt status of the bonds and to comply with the relevant securities laws. Further voted that each member of the select board, the town clerk and the town treasurer, be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents as may be determined by them or any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes. I further certify that the votes were taken at a meeting open to the public, that no vote was taken by secret ballot, that a notice stating the place, date, time, and agenda for the meeting was filed with the town clerk and a copy thereof posted in a manner conspicuously visible to the public at all hours in or on the municipal building, that the office of the town clerk is located or if applicable, in accordance with an alternative method of notice prescribed or approved by the attorney general as set forth in 940 CMR 29.032B. At least 48 hours, not including Saturdays, Sundays, and legal holidays prior to the time of the meeting, and remain so posted at the time of the meeting that no deliberations or decision in connection with the sale of the bonds were taken in executive session, all in accordance with general law, Chapter 30A, Sections 18 through 25, as amended.
Thank you for the motion. Do we have a second?
Second with a question.
Go ahead, sir.
Ms. Biscay, could you let us know what projects these bonds would be funding going forward?
These are refunding bonds for the police station.
And exclusively for the police station?
Just the police station.
And the remaining costs associated with it? That is all, Mr. Chairman.
Do we, second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you.
You'll be doing a lot of signing tonight.
Okay.
So if you wanna sign them and pass them to the end of the table?
I am the only one who can no longer speak, who signs these four documents, as the clerk.
Okay.
Okay. Next on the agenda is any other business. Does anybody have any other business they wish to bring up to the board's attention? Any at all? And I will take a motion adjourned.
Motion adjourned. Do you have a second? Sign the paperwork before you adjourn? It's not just those, it's the stack of paper.
Sure, we can sign it before we adjourn. That way there, it's more transparent. And this is just your signature, right?
Correct.
But the warrant needs all of our signatures, huh?
Scanning down the table are the notes.
Thank you.
This needs a hide. Tina?
Yes, sir. Oh, I see.
Can't get away with anything around here. These are done, right? Over there.
That needs a hide.
This needs a hide.
What am I sending your way? Oh, jeez, there are two pages each for it, sorry. This is in a minute. Just in order, as you have them?
That's fine, I'll reorder them. Kind of close, right? It is.
These in order, Mary?
That's fine, I'll reorder them. I have to scan them for the bank anyway. Those are the continuing disclosure certificates.
Mary, while we're signing away, you made a remark about the competition for the bond sale. What do you think contributed to the interest in our business?
I think it was the size of the issue. Our rating helped a lot. There was a lot going on in the market that day. And it was a bank out of, I think it was Nebraska, that actually picked up, was the winning bidder. So, which was a surprise. Usually it's someone more local. You never know with the bond market. Our financials are strong, too, that helps. That's the last one of that one.
Mr. Chairman, I think Ms. Heine makes a fantastic clerk, by the way.
Doesn't she?
A what, now what?
Fantastic clerk you make.
Funny, funny. These are all set. That's a tongue twister. Double was watch.
Okay, Mary, we need all of these back.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion in a second to adjourn. All those in favor? All right, opposed, motion carries, thank you. We are adjourned.
Good night.
Thank you.
Good night, folks, and thank you for listening.